... meeting, Council-City Council meeting Monday, December 10th, 6:00 P.M. It's our regular special meeting. And at this point, what I'd like to have is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think I have Julia and Natalie out in the audience. And you have to step to the podium and address me as Queen. No, that's all right.[27.11][27.11](Laughter).[28.11][28.11](Laughter).[29.11][29.11](Laughter). If everybody would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. That was very nice. I appreciate it. And so I'd like roll call, please. Councilmember Henley?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Here.
Thank you. I would like to say that we had no closed session, so there's nothing to report out on. And I'd also like the approval of the agenda, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please? Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So I think this is, well, obviously not, I think, but this is a special meeting. We're going on to, straight on to 4.1? Or should we still stay with?
We're, yeah, Mayor Aggermonte, we have, the next time would just be comments from the public on anything not on the agenda.
Oh, all right.
And as councils were and members of the audience, we are here for the council reorganization tonight.
Right.
There's no other business items other than all that.
All right. So we'll hear, we're here for comments from the public, but not dealing with this agenda this evening. So is there any from, anyone from the public who would like to speak? Seeing no one rise for the occasion up to the dais, I'll close the public session. And now I'm going on to, we, the, oh, meeting, consented calendar, there is none. So, meeting dedications, do we have any meeting dedications this evening? Thank you, Councilmember.
So I'd like to dedicate this meeting to Madeline and Sullivan Edwards, who have continued their musical careers on Monday nights, in which I plan to join them. So, and my wife Ruth, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. I love that one. Does she spell her name right, like me? Mad Olin? No, Madeline. I didn't.
She spells it correctly.
Correct.[181.43][181.43](Laughter). That's what everybody says. Okay, so now I'm on to four, number four, City Council Reorganization. There are a couple of things that are going on here. We, the 4.1 of consideration and action to adopt a resolution reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November 6, 2018, declaring the result and such other matters as required by law, and thereby determining that Rachel Hundley, Logan Harvey, and Madeline Aggermonte have been elected to the office of City Council of the City of Sonoma, and that Measure S, I'm not supposed to continue on with that. Righteous, okay. Yes, continue? Okay. And that Measure S about, measure known as the increase in transient occupancy tax was approved by the voters. And now our city manager.
Yeah. And there is an alternative resolution as well, which would be approving the resolution just for the council election, not for Measure S. But I'm going to turn that to our city clerk, Rebecca Barr, who's our elections official, and he'll give you a brief staff report on this item. And we have an update as well.
Thank you. So before you tonight, we are bringing the results of the November 2018 election that was held in the city here. It was, the election was held for the purpose of electing three members of the council and also to vote on the measure, which was Measure S, which would increase the transient occupancy tax from 10% to 12%. The results of that election were received, and the members of the council that were, or the individuals that were elected were Rachel Hundley, Logan Harvey, and Madeline Aggermonte. And the Measure S was voted on successfully and adopted by 79.9% of the total votes. So it was quite, quite a good turnout on that. So per elections code, I am bringing it for you tonight, and I've certified the results, and I'm bringing it to you to accept those and to move forward with that. At the time the staff report was written, we had not received the statement of votes from the registrar of voters. I did include a cumulative total results, which were official results, and that's all that we had at the time for Measure S, which was why we had the alternative resolution on the agenda. However, as of about five minutes before I left for this meeting, I opened the envelope and had the statement of votes for Measure S, which I have presented to you and made available to the public this evening. So with that, unless there are any questions, staff's recommendation at this time would be to move forward with the resolution number one, which would certify both the election results for the city council race and for Measure S.
Well, then that sounds that we can withhold the one and take out all, if one and two, is that right, resolutions? Okay, the first resolution? I think I just read. And I'll read it again, doggone it. A lot of work went into that. Adopt a resolution reciting the facts of the general municipal election held on November 6, declaring the result and such other matters as required by law, and thereby determining that Rachel Hundley, Logan Harvey, and Madeline Aggermonte have been elected to the office of the city council of the City of Sonoma, and that Measure S, a ballot measure known as the increase in transient, transient, transient occupancy tax was approved by the voters. I need a motion for this?
No, actually, I need to.
Go to the public.
Any questions from councilmembers, and then go out to public comment.
All right. Thank you. So I will take it out to the public if you have any comments regarding this. Hearing none, I'll close that. And at this point, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Hey, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Henley? Aye.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. So I'm now going on to number two. Adopt a resolution reciting the facts of the general munis-
Mayor.
Oh, we did the whole thing. Okay. I'm not awake. So now 4.2, presentation to, presentation to outgoing Councilmember Gary Edwards, our city manager.
Great. So just so the members of the community and councilware, what I'm going to do on each of these items that we go through, and just briefly lay out the process. And so we'd like to ask Mayor Aggermonte and Councilmember Edwards to please come down off the dais. And Mayor Aggermonte will have, present, Councilmember Edwards with a couple of gifts from the city. And then Mr. Edwards will make some remarks, ask for comments from fellow councilmembers, and then we'll have public comment. And then we'll go to the next recognition item.
Mayor Aggermonte, yeah, mic. Just want to make sure you have the mic from there. So, of course, this is absolutely wonderful. City of Sonoma Distinguished Service Award, Gary Edwards, Councilmember, 2014-2018. In grateful recognition of your selfless, dedicated leadership and service to the community, presented this 10th day of December 2018 on behalf of your fellow councilmembers, city staff, and the citizens of the City of Sonoma. And I have one other gift. And I guess we're going back up to the dais for you to say something?
So in addition to the Key to the City plaque, there's an actual key to the city tie tack, something that Councilmember Edwards will or-
I'll never use it because I never-
Or you can put it on your lapel, lapel pack, whatever you would like, something that's a little more, something you can wear around the community. So with that, we'll turn to comments from Councilmember Edwards, and then members of the council.
Right. So I think we're, we are now going to go for any comments from the city council, and then out to the public.
Yeah, we're going to start with Councilmember Edwards making a few remarks, and then we'll go to the council.
Why don't we do that? Mr. Edwards?
I don't know if I actually have anything to say. I do have, I do have a gift as well, which, this is probably an appropriate time. Fred Alibach, when we, when I came on council, he says, "Oh, I have this great hat that you can have." And so I got it, I took it to the cleaners. And actually, my head's not quite as big as Fred's. So Logan and I were meeting the other day, and so I decided to re-gift this hat to Logan Harvey.
Oh.[631.48][631.48](Applause). That's nice.
That's a very nice hat. So we have to take a picture together.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, it's perfect. It's perfect.
That's great.
It looks really good.
Yeah.[642.48][642.48](Laughter).
So Logan made a comment, and says, "At least I'll be somebody with a beard on the, on the council," says now also with a hat. So, yeah, I just want to thank my fellow councilmembers. We've, you know, had interesting times, and some good, some difficult, but I think we, the place, Sonoma's a better place than, I know than I found it, and I think it'll continue to improve. And people have sent me lots of messages saying, "Oh, you're going to retire." No, I'm not retiring, I'm not going away, not leaving town. When you walk up the stairs and you see all the people that have served on the council, a lot of people drift off and go to other towns and things like that. And I'm just going to continue working on making Sonoma a better place for my kids. And so I'll be, you know, any assistance that I can give to any one of you, I'll be there. But I'm going to continue working with Rotary and all the folks I work with, and just make this a better place and continue. So that's about all I have to say.
Thank, thank you so much, Gary. So before we go out to the public, I'd like, I'd like to ask my colleagues for any comments.
I'll go first. It's been a journey over the last four years, and it was exciting being elected with you in 2014, and everything that we've seen with the city, which, I mean, so much has happened, not the least of which is introducing a new city manager halfway through. But I've always appreciated your practicality and your deep commitment to the community and your respect for the staff. And even when we have disagreed on issues of constitutional law, I've known that your perspective has enriched our discussion, and I, we will miss having you.
Thank you.
And thank you for serving.
Yes. Amy?
Oh.
Vice Mayor.
So I, 100% would not be on the city council if it was not for Gary. And Gary supported me and encouraged me to run, and he never asked me to vote any particular way or the other, and he always encouraged me to have my own mind about that. And I really love being on here, and I owe that to Gary. And so I really appreciate that. And I think Gary's probably done that with a lot of people in town, encouraged them to do things quietly, and hasn't taken credit for it, and has helped people along to do things, and people know that about Gary. So thank you really deeply for myself. It's meant a lot to me, and I know you've done that for a lot of people. So we'll continue to, you know, spread that goodwill, and I hope that I will do the same thing as you, which is encourage other people to try some new things and give them a hand. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
David?
Yeah, Gary, I just want to thank you for the four years that you've served alongside me on this council. And I'm glad to hear that you're not retiring and you're still here. You have benefited the City of Sonoma a lot on the city council, which is really shadowed by how much you do for the community. And what you did at Paradise, running up there, really got me thinking about even my community service, how much more I can do. So just thank you for being a great councilmember and a good human being.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, Gary, you know, there are two things I know about you. You taught me the word "ass tangle" when things got tough on the city council. We won't tell them what that was, but you had the word for it. I appreciate it. The other thing is, you're so busy doing things for others. It doesn't, you don't, it doesn't even have to be Sonoma people. It's everywhere. So my, what I would always say, "I'm sorry Gary can't be here." He's either organizing food for people, getting food for people, cooking that food, and organizing for the next time. He is the most civic-minded person I've ever met, especially anywhere, everywhere, and especially here in Sonoma. But those are the four things I always said in your absence, and you always said, "Thank you." But it's absolutely the truth. It's absolutely the truth.
Thank you, Madeline.
So now I'd like to go out to the public if you have any comments.
Well, I just, Logan Harvey, 578 S. Derry Drive. I just want to thank Gary for, for his time up here and for being a really strong advocate for the town. And when we met, you reminded me to remember that this is about Sonoma, and to keep the focus there, and to keep the focus on what's best for this town. And I think that you show that, not only with your actions on city council, but with what you do in the community. Paradise fire happens, you drive up there to take care of it. When the fire happened here, you were one of the first people getting, getting things done here. And I know that you're going to continue with that community service. I look forward to reaching out for you for council and to, you know, learn more about this town, and learn more about how everything works at the city. And I just appreciate having you in my corner. And thanks for my first cowboy hat. I'm very excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan.
Hi, Gary. I'd like to pay my respects to you for your four years on the council, and I look forward to seeing you around town on some service projects that maybe we'll share together.
Thank you, Fred.
Hello, Ann Collicius, 14 Hacienda. Gary, I want to thank you so much for representing GSMOL and the Tri-Park Committee tonight for your outstanding work on the rent stabilization or space rent protection in Sonoma, along with many of the members that are here tonight. That was, I hope you all, as we do, appreciate what a monumental piece of legislation that you enacted at that time, and really feel proud of that, as we are very appreciative to all of you. And also Thanksgiving, that was my first community Thanksgiving just this year, and that was awesome. So thank you so much, and we hope, see you around.
Thank you.
First name is Pather, last name is Dalton, 460 La Quinta Lane, Sonoma, California. I had the opportunity to stand in front of Gary and Ruth probably about 13 years ago in June to officiate their wedding. And so it's been a very nice relationship. But I'm here particularly to say thank you, Gary, and to Ruth for allowing you to be out in the community, serving people from all walks of life. And I'm thinking as a, as a member of the Sonoma Valley Interfaith Minister Association, which I am very active in, a nice example of what church is about, of reaching out to people from all walks of life and different backgrounds and different cultures and different color of skin. And that's what, that's, thank you very much. And to the city council, anything we can do, Sonoma Valley Interfaith Minister Association, to be part of a collaborative team with the new city council and our friend here to my right, we look forward to doing that. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Pather.
Lori Gallion, and I just wanted to say, although I said this to you personally, Gary, I wanted to come up and publicly acknowledge your service here on the council. As someone who has recently just been a recent friend from 2006 to you, I have seen the selfless dedication that you have given to our particular community. I think you have inspired many, and there are many more that you need to mentor. So I wish you great success in your journey as you venture forward from here. And as one who has served with you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. Is there anyone else?
Jack Dean, A59 Plow Street. Thank you, Gary, and for your four years of service, and I also thank you for your support for our sister cities, for Chinese Pavilion and the project. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Do we have anyone else who would like to step up to the podium? Seeing no one, I'm going to, nobody's jumping up. That's what happens here. So I will be closing the public session. Now on 4.3, recognition, recognition of re-elected councilmembers Aggermonte and Hundley, and introduction and oath of office of new councilmember Logan Harvey. And so I'm turning this over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Aggermonte. So I'm going to ask our city clerk, Rebecca Barr, to come over to the edge and other side here to help do some of the swearing-in process. And what we'll end up doing here is we are going to, first, we'll have Mayor Aggermonte come down, and we'll present a certificate of election and a city PIN. We're doing a bit of a new tradition of, and if any of you have been to a police or fire, someone gets a, becomes appointed, they get a PIN. When they get another PIN, they get their badge, and they become pinned, and they're able to pick someone special to place that PIN on them. And so we've asked each of the councilmembers and newly-elected councilmember that they can select someone to place their city PIN. So we'll start with Mayor Aggermonte, and Ms. Barr, if you want to go through the process.
Sure. This is the presentation of the certificate of election. It says, "I, Rebecca Barr, City Clerk of the City of Sonoma, State of California, certify that a general municipal election held in the city on November 6, 2018, Madeline Aggermonte was elected to the office of city councilmember, as appears by the official returns of the election and the statement of votes cast now on file in my office. I fix my hand and seal, official seal, this 10th day of December 2018."
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Oh. Oh, and where's my pinner?[1283.46][1283.46](Laughter). He'll be so happy. He said, "I don't know how to do this." Look how easy it is.[1287.46][1287.46](Laughter). Look how easy this is.
See, all you do is do that. All is awesome, right? Now Madeline and Rich are going steady.[1292.71][1292.71](Laughter).[1293.71][1293.71](Applause).
and then Mayor Aggermonte, if you'd like to say a few words. I think one thing about this new tradition, being a councilmember takes a lot of work, and it takes a family and or folks behind to support them. And so we want to take, have an opportunity to recognize those folks. So Mayor Aggermonte, congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I think I would. It's so, first of all, I love seeing our staff here. Thank you so much. These are people we've really gotten to know, and we really appreciate. And you're actually our ambassadors. We can't be everywhere. And so I really appreciate, appreciate you all being here this evening. This last campaign was, you know, I think was pretty interesting because I walked and walked and walked, six hours on Saturday, six hours on Sunday, two every night. I didn't lose one pound.[1422.11][1422.11](Laughter). Because when you walk that much, you can actually have dessert at every meal. So it was a very different kind of campaign. But you know what? I'm really looking forward to the next four years here in the City of Sonoma and representing people here. And I think it's a wonderful place to live, and there's a lot of great things coming up. Thank you.
So now if we can have Councilmember Henley come down, and City Clerk Barr will present the certificate of election.
Certificate of election. I, Rebecca Barr, City Clerk of the City of Sonoma, State of California, certify that a general municipal election held in the city on November 6, 2018, Rachel Hundley was elected to the office of city councilmember, as appears by the official returns of the election and the statement of votes cast now on file in my office. I fix my hand and official seal this 10th day of December 2018. Congratulations. Thank you.
And my, my pinner for the evening is my new husband, Sean Hamlin, who some of you might have seen at this similar meeting last December.[1489.83][1489.83](Laughter). There will be no proposals this evening.[1493.46][1493.46](Laughter).
Men.[1495.46][1495.46](Applause).
some remarks.
Thank you to everyone out there who helped with this campaign. It was a very interesting campaign season, and I am ecstatic to be on this side of things. And I'm excited about the next four years, and I'm particularly excited about 2019. There's a lot of great things coming down the pipeline, and I think that we're going to, we're in a position now where we're going to be able to do a lot more outward-facing things to help the community and to make our city a better place. So I'm excited. I'm excited to be working with Madeline again. We've been doing a lot with our subcommittees lately, and I'm glad we don't have to change that up. And thank you to city staff for everything that you do, and thank you all for being here.
So before we move on to, to Logan Harvey and having him sworn in, and just, Ms. Councilmember Edwards, is there anything you would like to say before you leave the dais?
We want to take a picture with Gary.
Okay, great. Come on down, and let's take a picture.
Yeah, I think I've said everything I need to say.
Okay, great.
I'll say more, but I'll say it with my three minutes later.
Okay.[1609.21][1609.21](Laughter).
Say cheese, everybody.[1611.21][1611.21](Laughter). Jay Fonda says, "Say money." Money.
One more?
One more. And I make a funny face, everyone.[1617.21][1617.21](Laughter).
Okay. So Councilmember-elect Mr. Harvey, would you please step forward?
And Rebecca Barr, our city clerk, will perform the oath of office.
Your girls did a great job.
We're going to start with the certification of your election. I, Rebecca Barr, City Clerk of the City of Sonoma, State of California, certify that a general municipal election held in the city on November 6, 2018, Logan Harvey was elected to the office of city councilmember, as appears by the official returns of the election and the statement of votes cast now on file in my office. I fix my hand and official seal this 10th day of December 2018. Congratulations. Now, do you hold the box, and then you can have your PIN?
Okay. The number four.
You want to do the PIN first?
No, no.[1701.11][1701.11](Laughter).
So, raise your right hand. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Logan Harvey, councilmember.
I, Logan Harvey, councilmember.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will, that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.[1757.71][1757.71](Laughter).
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.[1773.53][1773.53](Applause).
And I'll have you sign this in just a few minutes.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. And I'll have you sign this in just a few minutes. Want to have your pinner come up and announce who that is?
My pinner is my wonderful and amazing fiancee Lily Ho-Rine, so please come up. I almost called her Lily Ho-Rvy, but that's soon. Sorry, I'm getting choked up. Let's do it.
And if you would like to get settled and make a few comments.
Do I have to hold the button or how does it work? Okay, good. It's a very different view from up here, so I'm going to get used to it. I just want to thank everybody who helped support this campaign. It was a long effort and a lot of fun. I want to thank my fiancee Lily for always standing by me and for letting me do this. I think grocery shopping is going to take a lot longer after this is done. I want to thank David Cook, who was one of the first people that ever told me I should run for council and I really appreciated that. And Councilmember Hunley for being so supportive of my campaign and running with me. And Harrington for supporting me. And Madeline for being just an amazing human being and being so kind during the campaign. It was a lot of fun running with you and getting to know you through this process. I want to thank the voters as well for entrusting me with this strong, this huge honor and this huge responsibility. And I promise to always keep the city of Sonoma in mind. I'm so excited for these four years. I think that we have a really great opportunity to define our future and really work together to make this a beautiful place to live, a more beautiful place to live. And I love this town so much. I was born and raised here by my parents and I'm so thankful every day for the opportunity to live in this community. And I think that we're going to, we're going to work together well and have a wonderful next four years. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. You know, it's interesting, when we were in the campaign, Logan would say, "I was born here," and I'd say, "I can't top that." So all I said was, "Well, I was born, but not here." But it was, it just, I don't know, I'm very excited because I know you have some real commitments to Sonoma, so I'm excited about that. At this point, I'd like to turn it over for public comments. And if there's anybody who would like to speak on anything you've heard here, you certainly can come up and do that now. Whoa, this is a new one.
Check in A59, the Plo Street. I came here today just want to say thank you everybody and also a congratulation for the new elected city council member, especially for Logan Harvey. And you represented our new concept, our new future for the Sonoma. And before you got elected, I know you focus on affordable housing issue. That is wonderful. That is the, but after you elected, you will face more issues. And for example, you want to set up trust fund, an affordable housing trust fund. But I read a newspaper that money, $500,000 already gone. So that you will have a lot of the difficulties and the challenges. But don't forget, you have a lot of people behind you, support you. We all want to support you. I want to see you fly. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ding. Is there anyone else who would like to come up and speak? Seeing no one rise to the podium, I will close the public session.
And Council, just, I don't know if any of you want to make any closing remarks before we move on to the reorganization with the mayor and vice mayor, but leave that to you.
Does anybody have any, would you like, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Congratulations and I look forward to working with you again and for the first time.
David?
Well, I'm glad to see you up here and I know the next four years you're going to do some exciting things. So my door is always open if you ever have any questions.
Rachel?
Excited to have you on the team.
Well, I'm sorry.
I pushed the button. I'm excited to be here and just really excited for the opportunity and I'm going to learn a lot from all of you. There's a wealth of experience and knowledge up here. And I think that there's a clear directive to get a lot of really wonderful things done for the town. And I'm looking forward to that. So it should be a lot of fun and a lot of hard work, but yeah, it should be great.
Well, likewise, I'm really, you know, we, I think we drove, what was it, over a year ago, we drove up to Santa Rosa together in this horrible storm. You got me there alive, you got me home alive, so that's a real start. And, but I'm really excited because I think fresh ideas are always exciting. And sometimes I think I'm right and I like to be proved wrong. So I'm not the last one, I'm not going to be the first one that will ever say that. But I really appreciate your being here and I really look forward to exchanging information and ideas with you. Thank you, Logan. So I believe we're going on to 4.4, city council reorganization. Oh my God, look at me. Number one, recognition of outgoing mayor. Yes, thank, oh, sorry, pardon me. Sorry, I apologize for that. Recognition of outgoing Mayor Madeline Agamonte. And that's where we are now.
Great. And then as part of this, we'll also do the selection of the new mayor and vice mayor. But at this point, if we could have Mayor Agamonte and Vice Mayor Harrington, please come down. And Mayor Agamonte, we have some recognition and presentations for you on behalf of the city. And then we also have a gift from staff as well.
Okay, Madeline, on behalf of the city, I'd like to present you with this beautiful gavel.
Thank you.
And it reads, "Madeline Agamonte, Mayor of, in honor, Mayor 2018 in honor of your service to the city of Sonoma."
Always such a shy girl.
I mean, it's been hard for her, but she doesn't really like being in the center of attention, but she's worked it out.
Just if, we also, on behalf of staff, Mayor Agamonte, we want to say thank you. When you're the mayor, you spend a lot of time with staff, working on kind of agenda, different community events. It takes a lot of, it's a lot of work to be a council member, but it's an extra amount of presentation at different, going to community events and really representing the city. So, thank you.
Oh, is this where, Amy, is this where it happens?
Yeah.
This is where it gets serious. We decided we're going to arm wrestle over this position.
Yes, it's a new tradition we're starting tonight, is the mayoral arm wrestling. Might be a thumb wrestle.
So any comments from council members or we can move to the selection of the new mayor?
Oh, yes.
Well, as Logan will find out, there's many things you don't know about being on the city council, but one of the, some are trying. But one of the most wonderful things you can find out is that you have a great colleague that is helpful and funny and always nice to be with. And a lot of times, I would say, people ask you if you want to drive somewhere very far with them, like to Sacramento, and you think like, "Oh my God, that'd be terrible." But I always want to drive with Madeline. And she always has a lot of great stories and insight. And so one of the nicest things that's happened since I've been on the city council is getting to know Madeline Agamonte. And I'm glad that she was our mayor and I'm glad that we'll be on the city council together for the next two years. And it's really been, one of the nicest parts about being on the city council is getting to know Madeline, so.
Thank you, thank you, Amy. David?
Madeline, you've served well as mayor and I consider you a good friend and just thank you for your service. I know sometimes people think you're a little ringy dingy, but I think that's a little bit of a ploy to catch us off guard, so.
It's like a spider pulling people into the web.
So, good job, mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Madeline, for all of your hard work this year. The mayor gig has many different facets to it and some of them can be quite challenging. And I feel that you've represented the city very well and that you've led the team very well. And your sense of humor has been much needed to get through the past year. But thank you for all of your commitment, your willingness to put yourself out into the community, which I think was, seemed to be one of the parts you enjoyed the most was being able to just be a part of everything. And I'm excited that we get to still have you up here. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Would you like to share something?
I would love to share things. I want to thank Madeline for her services mayor as well. You know, during the campaign, your slogan was showing up for Sonoma and I thought that that was very apt. You're always everywhere. You're at every single event that the community holds, whether it be a small little gathering or a large function. And I think that that's really, really an important role that the mayor plays and something that you did an incredible job of. And you always, you know, make decisions based on, you know, your true beliefs. And I think that that's wonderful. And I look forward to many car rides with you. And there's a fact about Madeline that many people don't, maybe don't know, that she's a huge Tupac fan. And this has been confirmed with Madeline and it's amazing. And I will definitely be putting that on if I get the chance to drive you.
When we drive together, we can sing Tupac songs.
Yes, we will absolutely be doing that.
Thank you, Logan. Okay, where are we going now? That's me. Selection of the new mayor, mayor nominations for the position of mayor. So this is what I'm, oh, I'm city manager.
Yes, so you, at this point, the mayor will ask for nominations. Nominations are a little different where there is no need for a second. So if a council member wants to nominate someone, they nominate. If someone, if another council member wants to nominate someone else, they can nominate someone else. When there are no more nomination, no more nominations put forward, then the nomination period closes. And then you would go out and do public comment and then you will come back and we will vote first on the first nomination. If that receives the majority, then we are done. And then we would move on to the vice mayor. If it does not receive a majority, we would move on to the second nomination, if that's clear. So Mayor Agamonte, if you want to open the nomination period.
Sure, I'd like to open the nominations for the position of mayor. And as to remind everyone, there are no seconds required here.
I would like to nominate Amy Harrington.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, I'm closing this and we'll vote.
You're going to need to go out to public comment first.
Sorry, out to the public for comments. Golly, I wish we had more meetings like this. Well, I'm going to close the public comment right now and, "What is the pleasure of this council?"
About a roll call.
At this point, we would do a roll call vote based on the nomination.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Mayor Agamonte?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
So I'm turning over the, just a minute. I'm turning, oh yeah, we're standing up. We were going to do an arm wrestle, but we'll pass that.
We could just do a handshake.
I'd like to pass this on to you, Amy, with all the respect I think you deserve. And I'm really looking forward to next year because it's going to be great.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. I think it's okay if I make a comment now? Yeah. Well, I just wanted to say that when we first, my children are here and my dad, and when we first moved to Sonoma about 10 years ago, I thought, "This is the nicest place I've ever been." Like everything that you could ever be interested in, if somebody else is doing it, they invite you to join in. It's physically incredibly beautiful and really it's been like the best time of my entire life. So I'm so proud to be able to represent the city for the next year. And the role of mayor, you know, it is mostly ceremonial. There's many things you have to attend to, but I am really proud to try and bring forward what's great about this town and share it with everybody wherever I go. And in terms of an agenda, I think we are going to have a lot of time to move forward pieces of work that we've been wanting to do. Three of the things that I really care about and I hope we can get done this year and I'll be working hard on them are, number one, a fair minimum wage for the city of Sonoma. The people that are working here deserve to make more than a third of a pizza in an hour and that's something I'm passionate about and I think I have support of my colleagues to talk about that. Number two, a housing trust fund. We've been talking about it and talking about it, talking about it. And we have the option of enacting one more percent of the hotel occupancy tax and we could use that money to fund a housing trust fund. And with the wisdom of my colleagues, we could figure out what the best ways would be to help people so they can live here and work here. And then number three, I hope that we are able to accomplish some reasonable and rational cannabis regulation in this session. And I know my colleagues have many other things they want to work on and our agendas are collaboratively decided, but I hope that, I hope that those are three of the things that we can accomplish in the coming years. And my phone number is on the website of the city and you are welcome to call me and talk to me about anything that you're, that you want to work on. And my door is always open and I'm happy to talk to you about those issues and the other issues affecting the city and I think it'll be a great year. Thank you.
So Mayor Harrington, our next item will be the selection of the vice mayor. So if you would, in the same kind of process, open the nomination.
Okay, I'm going to open up the discussion for nominations of the position of vice mayor. No seconds are required, but other council members can express support for the nomination or make a different nomination. So if you would like, whoever has a nomination for vice mayor, please make it now.
I would like to nominate Dave Cook as vice mayor.
I'd like to nominate Logan Harvey. Are there any comments from the council? Seeing none, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Okay, if there's no public comment, I will close public comment and how shall we proceed?
So you start, go ahead.
You start with a roll call vote for your first nominee, which was Councilmember Cook. And then if that fails, then you would go to a roll call vote for Councilmember Harvey.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote on the nomination of Councilmember Cook?
Councilmember Hunley?
No.
Mayor Harrington?
No.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Harvey?
No.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Agamonte?
Aye.
Motion fails 3-2.
And can I have a roll call vote on the nomination of Logan Harvey?
Councilmember Hunley?
No.
Mayor Harrington?
No.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Harvey?
No.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Agamonte?
Aye.
Motion fails 3-2.
And can I have a roll call vote on the nomination of Logan Harvey?
Councilmember Hunley?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
Yeah, and I actually meant to make a comment. There's been a lot of hullabaloo about who gets to be the mayor and vice mayor. And so I put a lot of thought into this and I think Councilmember Cook is a great council member. And not supporting him tonight is because I think everybody should get a chance, one chance first before someone gets a second chance. And so Logan is new and he hasn't had a chance yet and everybody else has had a chance. And so before I could support somebody getting two turns to be vice mayor and mayor, I think we should all get a chance to do those roles because they are highly ceremonial and that seems the fairest to me. So I just want to be clear that this isn't a no vote of confidence on David Cook. I think he's great. But I do think ultimately it was unfair that Gary Edwards didn't get his turn and that happened because somebody else got two turns before he was able to get one. So I support that whoever hasn't had a chance yet should get their turn and that's why I'm voting for Logan.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Council, or Councilmember Agamonte?
Well, first. First of all, what are we doing, I'm, well, okay. Take a deep breath. Some of the comments I've just heard are rewriting history. There were reasons for certain things happening, but I will say no to Logan Harvey.
Thank you. Motion carries 3-2.
Okay, with that, the meeting is adjourned.
Yes, and Mayor Harrington, if you'd like to invite everyone for refreshments. Yes, and Mayor Harrington, if you'd like to invite everyone for refreshments. We have some lovely cakes and we'll take a picture, let's take a picture of the new council first and then we'll celebrate with refreshments.
Thank you.